Heavenly Father, we come to you today to send us words of wisdom to guide this city into the future. We ask the decisions that we do make tonight for pleasing to you as well as pleasing to the people that we represent in this city called China Grove. We would thank you for the blessings that you have sent forth to us for getting this water of shame, for blessing of rain. We ask you continue to guide each and every one of us and support us as we move forward in this city. We also want to call attention to the brave soldiers, not soldiers, just soldiers, firemen, that go instead of running from danger, run to danger to protect each and every one of us. We ask that we all pause a few moments, like you say, a prayer for those nineteen who lost
United States of America, and deserve our life for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the meeting?
There is your places.
All ready to change this to the next? Ninety seconds. Keep on the third meeting. Motion for a commentary for the improvement to make second, two thousand thirteen. Second.
I'll second my motion.
I'll second, um, back to Ruth. All who's in favor. Happy regular meeting, June sixth, two thousand thirteen.
My chair has made a motion to, uh, basis, June sixth, two thousand thirteen, second and five.
And all who's in favor?
I applaud.
And this time if the public, the speaker presented three minutes, speakers are asked to defend or interpret what's actually on the parent's business office. And first on the hand, Ruth.
I couldn't write it clearly, sir, I'm sorry. I tied it out with my left foot, somebody put an X up there. I'm Tracy Stewart, I own a vending company in Shirts, Texas, traveling from Texas to Texas. I've been in business for about eight years. I service jukeboxes, full tables, anything Texas dollar bills, but when I operate the video games. I own a game room in the University City and operate the video eight liners. I did a small game room, twenty-eight game room. And I'm operating in the Texasville phone forty-seven oh one four B, and I work with the police department. And the city council, they have to make sure that everything's enough to hide windows or try to hide. I go in the zoning area where they try to zone that, put over to zone that, operate within the law and operate the way that we operate at the cities. It's a modified amusement device, it's a street where operators fund for anybody over twenty-one. They're not open up the operation of ours, just like the, basically, ten to ten, except for Fridays and Saturday nights when they stop at eleven o'clock. We, last thing, we operate within the law and let everything that is required of us. You are sitting charged against feed per machines, twenty-five dollars per machine, and that's the way I operate the city location. I'm like open with one China Grove, I don't know who to talk to. So I'm just kind of here interviewing myself, voice it, and I just tell it back with me and letting that would feel like a talk to, and then I kind of discuss it.
Probably put you on the next agenda since the last meeting, you run the systems permit, and you're playing this location and sport.
Well, I was looking either beside the Dairy Queen, or I don't know where y'all want to zone that. I don't remember the city council, sometimes I don't remember game rings right there beside, you know, the restaurants, or anyone that helps me. Wherever y'all want to zone that, I've been watching that. I've been at the Shirts, seventy-eight, along seventy-eight, the Shirts, where they zone the Dairy Queen, that's where I'm at, down there, that's where I set up that. Uh, University City was along that Booker Road, and I look up where they want me to up there. So it's pretty much what the city council's zones it, where I pretty much go. Put it back on y'all.
I have to review our ordinance, but I can say that we may have them in order.
Okay.
Do that, probably the next, uh, next, uh, month together.
Okay, alright, so thank you very much for your time.
Next speaker.
Just there running this place, I filed a complaint with the police, law and police department on May tenth. They restated that they wanted the game, you can get back to the seven eight, and yesterday it was too much. And I heard that it's kind of, you'll follow up, find out what's wrong with that. Uh, she filed a complaint, I never got it.
Be in touch. Okay, great.
I got it from the office on Friday, May tenth. Whatever lady who ran the office there.
You don't have any knowledge of any complaint?
I copied my complaint with the little map that I drew out, and I went to the next state, made it notarized on these comments. Had notarized, can't straight here copy off.
So you do have a copy?
I have a copy.
You copy what you said, make a copy of it, and then you need to work to do.
Okay, okay, we'll do that right now, wait until the meeting.
Bring it on.
Alright.
Next speaker.
Welcome to the council. I welcome the new city staff over here, and my comment is an opinion, opinion comment about an article that appeared in the South Side Reporter in regards to the comments of a council person, and the reporter ad came out here on June nineteenth, might involve CNN, where it designates China Grove resignation signal continued city dispute. Okay? I don't know if y'all read the article, but what I was taken by on the dispute issue was the comments, and this is my opinion, of a councilman, Mike Traynor, in his reference to our past city employees, the city administrator, our court clerk, and Reda, of course, the police department. Okay? And for those of you that haven't read the article, and this is, like you said, in the South Side Reporter, the statement that he made was that "we were top-heavy," Traynor said, "the writing was on the wall for many of these ex-employees who left our city. What we have here is just a group trying to collect unemployment benefits." And gentlemen, twenty-nine years, our city administrator hired by Mayor John Posada here, with me for twenty years, and to characterize a former city administrator and the staff of the city of China Grove in this way is very demeaning and shows a lack of respect. And my only comment was for this council, for anyone involved, to please show more respect for people, especially when it's your own staff. That's my comment. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker is out. Huh?
Who?
This is Puck.
Alan. Hold on, we can't get Alan well.
I can read it. It's Puck, buddy. I can read them. I can go to the next side, pretty good, okay. Um, I have a complaint in Terragonita again, you know, I live in Terragonita, and I keep a close eye on that subdivision. Seven one one three, Terragonita has, need somebody out there now that we've got our staff, people together, maybe we can get something done about that house. There's been debris cut down from trees that's stacked in the front yard, the sides, the backyard's pitiful, there's, it's not being retained, someone needs to go out there, and we need to, I forget what you guys do to make it work, but I think y'all still know, do an ordinance thing, and then send out a police officer, if I can get that fixed.
We, 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 we need somebody.
Okay.
Send a doctor and a letter.
It needs to be cleaned up, and also the locks that are, belong to Ms. Kruski, right by the mailbox, it's kind of her shredding, that place is overgrown again. I know, it's been a few months now, but we had sent them, I think, a letter to have it cleaned up, and, you know, it's a big area right there in front of the mailbox, and it's, it's a bad, so, right there by the mailboxes, it belongs to Ms. Kruski.
Oh, her family?
No, but it's Mr. David, he knows his mother, and all.
If that's his property, do you know if they, that's a property that, that a guy wants to buy to build?
Is it property, I mean, now, do you know if he's comfortable with that, or?
No, not yet. I talked with him the other day, he hasn't, hasn't been done with it, she's still owning it. And it's grown up, and needs to be taken care of. So if you could please address those two people on those issues, I certainly appreciate it, I do notice. Go ahead.
You mean when you enter, when you put to the right?
Take the right, there's mailboxes, and if you just keep looking to your right.
All the way to the business.
It's actually Terragonita. Terragonita, because you know, it's kind of zigzagged, but if you see the mailboxes, you can't miss the grown-up area.
Okay.
Also, just, I don't know if any of you have been observing, that has to know, but they did move one of the lights in Terragonita, Michael, we asked for two lights for entrance, one light has been moved, and it looks like maybe there's some stakes there, maybe we might be getting the other one short, but I hope, if not, we're pleased.
They didn't mark it, so put the pole over there.
And that's going around that marking guard? So that's for them. Okay, well, that's good, well, they moved one light, so we worked with the light.
How bright is it?
I haven't been able to witness it, he might have been there at night.
It's good when you're coming up, but two would be ever.
I believe we're gonna try to get that on the road.
That marking, yeah. Yes, I know when CPS was here, you know, I made a call, and was asking about where those lights are, or where they're supposed to be. If you could maybe leave your number with the girls at the office, in case if CPS comes back, because I wasn't really for sure exactly where that second one is supposed to be. So, and then when CPS comes back, make a way to call you, make time, we need them up there, go down the road. Yeah, thank you very much.
But they do know where it's supposed to go down, that's, they have safety.
Okay, I mean, perfect.
There's still a third light there. Next speaker, Brandon Hunt.
Sorry, I'm moving, so that's why I forgot to catch. So, but I did want to let everyone know that National Night Out is coming, and so I, it's on November first, it's always the first Tuesday of November. October, I'm sorry, October, sorry. And I am coming to the council, the city, if you guys could donate again this year the two hundred dollars that every year the guys or journalists give us, so I was just wondering. Yes, every year, this is our, right?
This is on November?
Fourth, yes, October first, yes. So we're trying to get a big, yes, plywood sign right at the corner of eighty-seven and fifteen sixteen, so everybody can know about it. I feel like every year, people miss it, so we're trying to get signs and more advertising out there this year, so I don't know if you have a motion or whatnot, I just wanted to come. Do we have to put that all in the good line?
Yes, yes, you will, you might have to.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted everyone to know, so come out, because everything's free, I don't know if anyone has missed it or hears, but it's hot dogs, chips, it's good to know your neighbor, so it's different links, so.
Chuck wagon?
Yes, the chuck wagon.
Do you, do you know?
Yes, it's right here, so, so far.
They draw the prizes.
We draw the prizes, yes, so come on out, it's from six to nine, so. And if you'd like to donate, we are happy to, any prizes, anything, so, thank you, thank you, thank you. Now we have to go.
Anybody else want to come up for the second seat? Our current request, Mr. James Brooks, like I said, for a business seventy-five, seventy-five, I weigh he's at least.
I just showed up. The third meeting.
Okay, with the next request, Mr. Bill Miller, crackle hood, large back installation, twenty-four thirty-four, Foster Road.
I had submitted a proposal last week detailing what we'd like to do regarding location. What we have is a portable temporary washing system. First of all, we are an equipment rental company, and we have a need to wash our equipment and their return from, from business, so they can be ready for new business. So what we've, what we'd like to do is have a wash rack, which is what we call a portable system, installed there on location, nothing permanent is going to be done to the, to the current property, is to say something that we can, that just kind of holds out and get our, get our machines washed. It's a fully self-contained system, a hundred percent recycled water, it is a circulatory system, so all that water, dirty water, will be held for recycling, so there's no threat of runoff or anything of that nature. So my question was, is do I need to be permitted for this, and if so, can we get permission?
No, if you do permit?
That's why you don't have to hear again.
It, it, it's a bit of a...
So you say it's all, sorry, it's all inside of this, of three D on, all inside?
Self-contained system?
Yeah.
Like the city?
Back of the building, front of the building?
Is towards the back of the property, it's not near the road or anything?
Is it going to be, is it contain all water that has, being used, no way to bring up, track it up, to bring it out on the street, rugs, or that kind of thing?
No, no, when the machines are washed, they're clean whenever they're removed from this system, all the, all the water from this system is collected and pumped into the, into the recycled area, and that water is clean there next to that, and then, of course, recirculated back through all the, all the solids, and contaminated materials are held for recycling.
That is on the provision?
Absolutely.
So tell me, tell me this, what, what did Reuben, I heard Reuben did want you to have a model there, what, what did his take on that?
Well, I mean, this is why we're, we like to install a portable system, is because...
He didn't want the permit?
He didn't want any improvements made to the property.
Oh, okay, well, that makes more sense.
Right.
Other than that, my take is, you're gonna have to wash that stuff anyway, and this is probably the best way you could wash it in.
Absolutely.
Other than that, it's gonna be on the ground, so I mean, it's a no brainer for me.
We're trying to do anything we can to control these contaminants, so.
I didn't know what Reuben did, that makes sense. Excuse you. The library, both sides of the property, or is it?
Well, we're on Foster Road, so as you mentioned the property, our, the, our building is, is located as central on the property, it's about two acre property, towards the back of the property, I'd say the last third of the property is where this would be located.
And who are the neighbors on both sides?
Um, I'm not for certain, there's a residence on, on the, on the door side of the property, there's another building on the, on the south side, I think, on my, as well.
Martin goes, one of the, the north.
I just, I live down the street from you, and I own the property that backs up to the field.
Okay.
Okay. What type of containers are you gonna be having, are they gonna be large, plastic?
No, not at all, they, they are plastic, they are possibly four hundred gallons.
Fourteen, like forty-four, I guess?
This is the size of the, of the area that we would drive the machine up onto, if that's the actual part, if you just had it, it was.
Do you want to see a picture?
Could I?
There's details there of the filtration system.
Looks like a nice system to do in the sense that with the water crisis that we're having right now, maybe we can recycle the water in fifteen.
That was our, yes.
So it has like a base that traps water?
Yes, and this is, this is a steel base, it's bolted together, and it is sided, so the spray, it controls the spray from the bottom.
Okay, and then it goes back into the?
And then it goes back through the, the drains at the bottom of the base, and it's pumped into the filtration system, and then it's recirculated back to the pressure point.
And any particulates then are, are, you know, creatures?
All of the, all of the filtration system will be fully self-contained inside of a twenty-foot storage container, maybe, like see, we have an intermodal container, as you see, the shipping container basic, all this is gonna be inside of that container, so it's weatherproof, and.
Eventually, it's disposed of how?
Uh, there would be a company that we would come in to change out the filters for us and service the, service the area.
This would be done during business hours?
Absolutely, we operate seven to five, so.
And no washing would be done at five?
And you have it right behind where the building sits, kind of that and that?
Next thing, if you were going to be able to see it on the computer.
I'll make a motion. I don't know what we even need to do, if any.
That was my thought, is since it's not a permanent installation, I'm not sure if it's being, whatever that is, how many?
I do have one more question. Sid, if I remember correctly, we only did three hundred feet from the road, and where he positioned, even though the property is deeper than that, I, I don't know exactly where the, the building sits, because we only did three hundred feet from the road as commercial, even though the lot was a bigger lot, so would there have to be some rezoning of the remaining portion of that lot to?
Do you know how far the back of the building is?
I'm sorry, I couldn't answer that, sorry. I'd say the building itself is a hundred eighty foot long, I guess probably the front of the building is probably a hundred foot from the road, so we're in a two hundred fifty foot range, two hundred eighty foot range, the back of the building.
So we're just close?
Well, I mean, you know, to having.
Perhaps get with Reuben to make sure where the fountain would be.
What's, what's the question?
I mean, does, does zoning only goes from three to three hundred feet?
Commercial, for commercial. And then technically, your very back section of where your property is, is residential, it's still the old residential.
So you went back to being residential, doing a commercial job?
Yeah.
Okay. You see, he's got it cleared back there, but it's still where the?
Thing where the location is of what you're proposing, if it's in the commercial, it's okay, but if it's too far back, residential, this would not be allowed under the city's general orders. And that's, I guess what they need to determine is how far back is it, does it go to the residential zone? And also, for the water pad, is there anything you have to build, is there a concrete padding to that?
There's nothing permanent, it's gonna be done with proper, it's ultimately a basic rule.
So I don't think permits need to be that.
We just need a level area to, to set it up.
I don't think permits need to be that, you're just going to see about zoning position.
So, is there a chance to get that back portion of the property rezoned?
You'd have to submit an application to get it rezoned.
Okay.
Correct, the property owner and our public hearing, notice, we're not storing property.
I'm up with that.
There's a process.
Then if you come back, do you mind, would you mind doing that? Would you, would you be up for that, or actually measure if all your property, your building isn't set too tight? I agree.
I'd like to tell you, it's more than three hundred, I can just imagine, being there every day, I know it's more than three hundred feet from the street.
To the end, you mean, to the end of your property, you go to the end of your building, that's what we're asking. If it's one hundred sixty, you're saying?
Well, where the, where the washing system would be positioned on the property.
Would you want it to be on your feet?
Yes, it would be.
Dennis, you have something?
I was just gonna talk about the commercial applications, but you got it.
Now, we have the machines part in the back of that property. We.
Well, I mean, it's, we have like a full two acres, two acres leased, and, you know, it's strange that we can't use a full two acres in your business.
Well, and I think that's a sick saying, two acres is not a zone for commercial, so the fact that you have trucks back there, could be a problem.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the option is to request your current landlord to get the zoning changed.
Okay.
If it is to get the house, see, I think city needs to be better in making determinations to where residential starts, so, so that you're where, where the residential sections start, and see if there's any way you can put this where it would not be the residential.
So then, you could put it on the south side of the building?
Yeah, I, obviously, if we wanted to make some washing centers and that, then we would need this, might as well place it on the property for, for washing. need this might as well be based on the property for the, for the water. Without, without having that, correct.
Uh, Martin? Is this next to both the...
It's, it, well, it's, the way Ruben did the lot, he took it, the fence line gets back to where it's, it's next to Francis who owns the old homestead. But the fence line goes back into the actual landfill, so that makes it part of our, you know, responsibility. And, I mean, they're, they're, don't get me wrong, they are an excellent tenant. I mean, they mow the grass, they keep it nice and clean and everything is beautiful. But, you know, if one thing leads to another and now that Ruben's clearing more property and dragging mud onto the street and everything else, including he's hauling dirt in and various things onto another section that I think he did approve of commercial. I mean, with Ruben, you have to kind of tell him, you know, look, you've got to do it a certain way or he's just gonna continue to add on piecemeal. And, and nothing against your business, I mean, you know, if you need to start it on the south side until you get everything approved, then, you know, wonderful, but I, I just don't wanna see, if they leave in two or three years and somebody else who's in that's not near like them, then, you know, then we're kind of stuck because it's gonna kind of maybe be grandfathered according to the new people. And so I, you know, I'd like to have him come in, go through the process of getting the rest of the property zoned commercial, you know, at least their script to continue that two acre section, so that way everything can be done, you know, up and out.
And that would butt up to your property there?
That butts up to our property.
And, and your house?
Yeah. It's, you know, Francis Lynch owns it, so...
I can, I can go back to that one, I don't know, several meetings, and he came before us, and we didn't have a problem with being zoned commercial. While we had been zoned, he was a straight building, basically one in the property to the other in the property, and then property in the back, per property, wouldn't let lock. It was, you know, we, we can't do that. And that's really so, I mean, I think that's what the ultimate stop, if I remember correctly, right, was that whole building he wanted to build stretched completely across, and you know, landlocked, that, then she had backed it, so like, I mean, it was...
Well, I just, I don't think that I'm gonna have any luck ask, having Ruben done a hearing, request that it land be fully zoned, fully zoned commercial at this point. So, uh, us, Tricolor, we're gonna have to find another way. So we would probably have to move our watch plant to the commercial zone area on the property.
I don't ask, I don't have a problem with the plot.
I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask, I mean, I'm just not gonna hurt to ask. Uh, what is the timeframe from when we ask to get this back portion rezoned? What, how long is that?
Well, it does require one public hearing, and that it requires a notice in the newspaper. The notice has to be published at least fifteen days prior to that public hearing to give citizens sufficient time. There has to be a notice mailed to all property owners within two hundred feet of rezoning. And they have to give them like a fifteen day notice as well for that public hearing. So if, I would say at minimum forty-five days. And you have to also recall that commission, the council only meets once a month, so unless they call a special meeting, it all depends on when it's noticed and so forth.
Sure, sure. Thank you very much for your time.
Make permanent request for peace and approval, very good.
Your pool.
Perfect, he's perfect. I don't think you need to talk, I mean, it's cool, it's cool. But he knows, knows what's... The man is hard to understand. He gets beat up. It's hard for us back here to hear Mr. Ritz.
Okay.
Now you got it.
Uh, this is Sandra Factor? Yeah, and she lives at thirty-two, two triple metal, and she's, um, wanting to put a news pool permit, uh, to give it a diagram, uh, that be located behind the house. My friend. Well, then, I'd like to say, because the gentleman down on the end out here is the city attorney, Mr. Frank Barzil. The next item on the agenda is discussion action, consideration and possible action regarding acceptance of letter of resignation, Councilman Larry Cho. Mr. Gray, uh, moving through the letter of resignation, and Mr. Cho, second.
Who was the first one? Mr. Gray.
Mr. Gray is paying a motion to accept the letter of resignation, and Councilman Larry Cho. It's second by Chrisby in the discussion.
I just can't help, loud enough to say with you out, but, uh, as a neighbor and a friend, I just wanted to present it to you again, and I know you submitted it, if you're okay with it, we're okay with it. I mean, no regrets, no remorse, no anything, just ready to move on, just like the best of them. No change of heart, no, I'm saying, you're a welcome neighbor to me, by the way, that's why I'm putting you to the brand, which I remember, the mentor, or Doug? More Doug.
Come here, hold on this consideration of resignation section. All votes in favor. No vote. Next item on the agenda is consideration of possible action regarding government, Councilman number two, replace Larry Cho.
That was the thing we made, just, I don't know, what do we need to do? Maybe get letters or see if anybody gets interested before we act on it, I don't know, maybe one, one, maybe, um, you know, get, get the board out there, everybody knows that for good reasons, he has left, um, within a month maybe, and if anybody doesn't want to step forward to get with the London, the mayor, myself, and all those council people, and that's no big...
Can we, who, who was the next person in mind? Would they be considered?
As far as the vote?
Yeah, would that, I mean, I'm just asking, you know.
Um, under state law, in a general law like a city, when there's a resignation, the council can make the appointment. There's no process, I've seen cities use a different process. Most cities, when they have a vacancy, uh, open it up and take in applications, or just a letter of interest doesn't require an application, but just somebody to submit a letter of interest saying they're interested in being the council person. The council then conduct interviews during an open meeting that have to be done in an open meeting, and then make an appointment. Usually, they take in letters of interest for fifteen to thirty days and then make the appointment from those after they conduct interviews if they wish to. I've seen big cities and small cities do it that way. The only other time I've seen differently is when a city had two people that were both interested, the council couldn't decide, that they called for a special election. And that's also allowed for under the election, under the, generally, to call for a special election as well. That is a cost to the city. And because of state law, you wouldn't be able to call that special election until November. So you would have a vacancy until November. So it's really up to the council, you really have quite a few options, how do you want to see it?
If you'd like to see that maybe anyone interested in applying, I mean, why don't the position, ask the council person, maybe just some, some information to the board. They are here Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday from eight to three, or there's a mailbox in front, if anybody's interested in, you know, applying for that council position.
Motion to table this and, uh, I'd like the secretary to post the notice on the board, the people could submit some kind of their name and address that they would like to be considered for the nomination of, or the vacancy. And we have a motion to table this item until next month by Mr. John McRae. And a second, from Mike Trainor.
Mayor, certification. Was that motion also to accept applications?
That motion is accepted. I'm terrified that we will table this item until next month, and those interested in the position can tender a letter to the city secretary of those of interest.
Would it be applications or letters of behalf? I'm sorry.
Well, if your firm's had to be a citizen and...
Uh, have to be a citizen, have to be over the age of eighteen, uh, not been convicted of felony, uh, and a rich devoted, and living citizen.
Second question.
Okay, we second in the mid, that motion? All votes in favor. And opposed, none. Next item on the agenda is consideration of possible action regarding resolution number zero seven, uh, two zero one three, dash zero one, resolution providing for the appointment of Adriana, also known as Penny, uh, Arianas. Arianas, as a city secretary and providing for her own safety.
Approve resolution zero seven, two zero one three, dash one, according to Penny and the city secretary.
And what?
As of January eleventh, two thousand thirteen.
We have a motion, um, on resolution, number zero seven, two zero one three, dash one, or second. And second, two zero three. All votes in favor. Opposed? To the next item?
I have to, I have to swear to you. And it's not because I wanna leave. I'll still be here a while, but I wanted to say with Penny's praises, I don't think we're a long off time. She just retired from the City of Commerce, twenty-five years, when a school government experience, City Secretary, but she's too young to be retired, so. And when she heard I was here and helping out, she came following to help out, stuff envelopes, make diamonds, whatever, on a volunteer basis. And I twisted her arm into filling out an application. And, but, she's taken over the office, I just gotta sit in the corner and go where she wants me to go, do whatever. Go get supplies. Yeah. But, you're in good hands. I, Adriana Penny Arianas.
I, Adriana Penny Arianas.
Just solemnly swear.
Just solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of city secretary.
Of the city secretary.
Of the City of China Grove.
City of China Grove.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
Will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Reserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws. Of the United States.
The United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
This is Penny Arianas. Next item on the agenda is consideration of possible action regarding resolution number zero seven, two zero one three, two, resolution providing for the appointment of Jim Friskis as court administrator and providing for an effective date.
I'm going to, I'm going to the, uh, resolution number zero seven, two zero one three, dash two, two, resolution providing for the appointment of Jim Friskis, court director, providing for this state.
The motion from Mr. McRae on the resolution, two zero one three, two. We have a second from Mr. Mike Trainor. All votes in favor?
Aye.
No vote?
Okay, this is Jennifer Diaz. Don't do your own. And Jennifer also has extensive experience with the City of Windcrest. When the mayor asked me to help recruit people, I insisted on people who have useful military experience. You know, it's a totally different animal. If you don't, you've never worked in it, it's really, really hard. So he loves, when he had, when he did matter, different cities and every places there were. Uh, she's, she's dug in there, just like Penny, and super sharp and knows where to go, what to look for in the questions. She sent out letters rescheduling all those people that were scheduled for court on June fourth that we had to cancel, and we have court scheduled for July sixteenth. And, well, your judge and your prosecutor, who is also from Mr. Barzil's office, and I'm hopeful, everything will be worked, worked out. A general issue I can't deal with now. I, Jennifer Diaz, just solemnly swear. That I will faithfully execute the duties. Of the office of court administrator. Of the City of China Grove. State of Texas. And will to the best of my ability. Preserve, protect, and defend. Preserve, protect, and defend. And the Constitution and laws. Of the United States. And of this state. So help me God.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of possible actions regarding resolution number zero seven, dash two zero one three, dash zero three, a resolution for the City of China Grove, Texas, adopting the City of China Grove investment policy.
The State of Texas requires all government entities to adopt an investment policy. As a result of cities in other states having gone bankrupt, uh, who had invested in questionable investments, the State of Texas adopted a law that limits government entities to strictly invest. So basically, what you're investing... So basically, what you're investing in is in non... It doesn't bring you much money, but you won't lose it either. So it's just, it's just an act, it's the investment policy that's proposed, that's recommended by the attorney general's office, is what you have authority for government entities to adopt.
So the, again, section two has authorized investments, obligations to the United States, the state of Texas, and internationalities, i.e. for your built on the bonds, direct obligations of the state of Texas, its agency and international, internationalities. Other obligations, the principal of and endless, which are unconditional, guaranteed, or insured, by fact, by full faith, credit, state of Texas, United States, or the respective agencies, international. And it goes on down, certificate deposit by state, or national bank, a savings bank, a state, or federal treasury union, each domiciled in the state of Texas, which is guaranteed nature by FDIC, and its successor, or the national treasury, share, insurance fund, and so on. There's a variety of the company. Things you can invest in, most of them are very, very, very secure, and on this note.
It also has requirement for training of your officers or investment officers and so forth, there's financial training. It's offered by T M L, but this ordinance, or this resolution, does also require the training to be conducted. I think it requires the mayor and city administrators and a league, and the secretary to get, to make sure that they're, they get the need trained.
One motion.
I would like to make a motion to re-accept the resolution zero seven, two zero one three, oh three, for adopting the city of China Road investment policy as of this date, providing eleven, two thousand and thirteen.